Good evening. I'd like to go ahead and call the General Administration and Personnel Committee for the Village of Hoffman Estates on this Monday, October 11th, 2021. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Arnett.
Present.
Vice Chairman Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Noah.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McClellan.
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. If I can have approval of minutes for September 13th, 2021.
So moved.
Do we have any corrections, additions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Motion has been passed. We have nothing under new business. We will move on to reports for information only. Number one is the cable TV monthly report. We'll go ahead and receive and file that. Number two is the Human Resources Management Monthly Report. Nothing else? Receive and file that. Number three Legislative Operations Outreach Monthly Report. May I have a, if deferral is requested?
Move defer.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The deferral has been motioned and passed. Number three for President's Report?
Yes, last Tuesday, we had our weekly U.S. Conference of Mayors Call, Zoom rather, and we had the Celtic Fest Commission meeting, a wrap-up of what happened at Celtic Fest. We were pleased with it. Turnout was okay considering everything that's gone on in the past year and a half. And then we had National Night Out that evening also, which was nice of the police building. The weather held. It looked a little gloomy, but it wasn't raining, so that was great. On October 6th, we had the Northwestern Municipal Conference Executive Board Meeting and the Metro Mayor's Caucus Meeting on Census Coordination. People from the Census explained what you have to do if you want to appeal, or you think areas of town were left out or unaccounted, so that was interesting. Thursday, October 7th, we had our National League of Cities Transportation Infrastructure October Meeting, a leadership meeting. And on the 8th, I pulled the winning raffle tickets for the Hoffman-Shamberg Rotary, the afternoon Rotary. Always a great time as a politician. You make one person very happy and you know everybody else in the audience. And on the 8th, we had our Fire Department Open House at Westbury. That was mobbed. It was really good. And then the evening, we had the Women's Empowerment Dinner at our Marriott. And this morning, this afternoon, rather, had the Wings Suburban Leadership Council. Wings is planning on going national.
Wow.
They've really done amazing work. One thing I'd like to ask for, I've had a request, a couple of requests for a stop sign at Illinois Mohabe. It's right by the Shijularam Mandir. And we have another fire open house. It'll be stationed out west on Beacon Point next Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00. We also have our coffee with the board at 10:00 o'clock in the Hennessy Room in the back of the building. At 10:00, if anybody wants to ask a bunch of questions, that's really a good place to do it. And on Sunday, there's Gigi Fest from 12:30 to 3:00 at 2350 West Higgins. Nancy Johnnie's done a terrific job with the Gigi. They've got 66 of them now, I think. They're going all over the world. And we're very fortunate that our very first one wasn't Hoffman Estates and it's still here. That's all I got.
Thank you. I see nothing in, Mr. Palm?
I know. How unusual for me to speak up during a committee meeting here, but one item I just wanted to bring everyone's attention. There was an egregious error in the Citizen this month for trick-or-treat hours. So instead of, it says 3:00 to 6:00 when they're actually 3:00 to 7:00. So it was just a copy-and-paste error from last year. So our apologies. We've already got it corrected up on the website and we'll be getting some information out to everyone, but in case you start getting calls.
Yes.
Read the seven.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I see nothing in other or items in review. May I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Okay, moving right along, I'd like to call to order the October 11th, 2021 Transportation and Road Improvement Committee. Would Secretary please call the roll? Chairman Mills.
Present.
Vice Chairman Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Noah.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McClellan.
Present.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve the minutes of September 13th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Under new business tonight, we have one item, request authorization to award a contract for Phase 1 engineering services for the Hassel Road Bicycle and Pedestrian Enhancement, Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Project to Baxter and Woodman Incorporated of Crystal Lake, Illinois, at a cost not to exceed $67,250.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff wants to address this. Take it away.
Sure. This project was most recently before the board, late last year, when staff was preparing the ITUP application for the 2020 round. The village did receive notice in late summer and were made aware that the grant funds were awarded and would cover 100%, up to about $1.7 million of the projects, which would cover all phases of engineering as well as construction. As you may recall, the preliminary project scope does include bike and pedestrian and other streetscape enhancements along Hassel, Pembroke, and Stonington avenues as a way to improve safety, access for transit users of that PACE Barrington Road Station. The next phase of the process is to proceed with Phase 1 engineering. So we've gone through our qualifications-based selection process. We did receive seven submittals in response to our request for qualifications. Our team individually scored the proposals and collectively identified Baxter and Woodman as the top respondent among those that submitted. Baxter and Woodman has extensive experience of similar bike and pedestrian projects, Phase 1 projects, and specifically has direct experience with the ITUP program, is very familiar with those requirements. So at this time, staff is recommending that we proceed with Baxter and Woodman for the Phase 1 contract.
How far down does this project go on Hassel Road?
About, from Village Hall to Barrington Road.
Okay.
Approximately.
And will it include street lighting?
That is in the preliminary scope, so that's one of the things that during the Phase 1 will be evaluated to be incorporated.
Because it is quite dark down there at night.
Yeah, it is. It is. And that was specifically identified in our application, so.
Okay, questions? Trustee Palafas.
Trustee Mills, off of your question, I was going to ask, in the Barrington Road study, thank you. It was right there. You got me. We talked about doing something with the road across the street, which is kind of nobody's road, or we were going to take it over.
Right.
Could this include that, or is it eligible, or?
Not at this time because it's not a public right-of-way.
Or could we add it and not fall under this money but still do it? You know what I mean? Because it just kind of seems like the right thing to do and we're already kind of out there. I just wanted to throw it out there as a consideration.
Yeah, I don't think it would be eligible as part of the, of what we're discussing and you're considering tonight. We have had ongoing discussions with the property owners there. I think some tenant issues have come into greater focus for them. So now that those things, I don't think things are necessarily finalized yet at this point, but they're getting close to that. I think once that happens, that will allow them to come back to the village and begin those negotiations on how to tackle that project.
That'd be great. And then anything you could give me to bring to the Schamberg Bikeways Advisory Committee that I sit on? They love it when we come over with all the great stuff we're doing.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate that, but I think it's a great idea.
Mayor?
Yeah, I'm not a bike path expert by any means, but when you get to Hassel and Barrington, how's this going to work? I mean, you've got so many curb cuts. You've got the lane going straight, the lane turning left, the right turn lane. Is this, is it going to be, the bike path going to be blocked off at some point when you get closer to Barrington Road?
So the scope doesn't really include the intersection. It really comes up to the intersection, but one thing that we would like the consultant to do is look at that existing, it's on-road bike going westbound towards Barrington, and there's kind of a sharp angle to get back onto the path. So that's one of the things that the consultant will certainly look at to see if there are options to improve that transition there.
Yeah, there's people coming and going from the assembly, the gas station, the Comfort End, the Red Roof End.
Right.
Lot of traffic going around there. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Jennifer. Reports for information-only purposes, Transportation Division Monthly Report. I do have one question, and I was trying to find it in here, but I couldn't quite manage. The signs on Barrington Road, just off of Higgins now, there's signs about road construction going towards the Tollway entrance. What's going on that they're doing more stuff up there? As you turn onto Barrington Road, going westbound on Higgins, there's a sign that says "traffic patterns changing this week," I think it was.
Okay. You know, it could be the, there was some painting of the bridges, the bridge deck painting, a little bit further west, so it could be part of that.
Okay.
I know that was supposed to happen over the next couple of months, so that might be it.
I was just curious to see what more construction they're going to do by the interchange. Okay. Thanks anyway. Anyone else? Yes, Trustee Stanton.
Excuse me for a second. The question I have here is regarding Gulf Road and Barrington Road, the intersection improvements. Says we have an estimated cost of $719,000 with the improvements. What happens if we don't agree to the improvements?
That's something we'll have to negotiate. There will be a formal letter of intent that would come before the board, once we've negotiated that. But yeah, that's something we'll have to work through and ultimately come to terms on what we're comfortable paying with and paying for and what the state would be responsible for.
Well, what do they want us to pay for?
So replace, there's some lighting improvements, replacement of the actual streetlights. They have to remove and then replace them to meet the new standards with the construction. So that's primarily the cost of what they're proposing as our cost share.
Is that normally considered our responsibility?
The lighting, maybe. Because that particular light is actually the light to the east of the intersection that goes into the shopping center, since it's really just a single-purpose light, that's something that's typically a local share, but that's something that we'll have to work through with the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Noah, did you have, did you have a concern about something on Shoe Factory you were talking about the other day with one of the signs? Did you bring that, did you call that in? Okay.
Yes, I did. And I talked to Eric.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, because I know you might have been busy today for that.
He can explain it better than I can, but yeah. It's a precaution. It has to do with a sign as you're going up the hill before you hit the railroad tracks going westbound. And that sign used to say, "Traffic stopped ahead," and that sign is no longer working. And when it's dark and raining.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to do preventative.
Just wanted to make sure that you got a chance to.
Yeah, no, thank you. He's working on it right now, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Any other questions? If not, we will accept for information-only, the Transportation Division Monthly Report. Accept it and file. President's Report?
I have nothing else.
Is there anything else to come before this committee? Yes.
Are we going to bring forth, next time, discussion regarding speed limits?
Ah, that kind of got forgotten about, didn't it?
It did.
I'll talk to you, I'll talk to you after the meeting, Trustee Stanton.
If we could talk about that with Trustee Stanton here. And then we do have one item in review.
Trustee Palafas has something too.
Yes.
I just wanted to call to your attention that in the Paul Douglas Forest Preserve up north of the Tollway, there's actually a group that got approval from Cook County Forest Preserve to do a mountain bike, off-road trail set. I was telling the chief, fire chief, you know, when we were at the open house Saturday, that, you know, that'll have some off-roadedness to it. I only know because there's a friend of mine, actually it was a friend of mine who used to be an executive of Sears that I tell you about. So I'm trying to get in touch with him to have him come in and show us like the design so we can get a better understanding of kind of what's going to be happening in that area. Because it's bike-related and transportation and, you know, it also has the emergency services hooked to it. So I just wanted to, I don't know if that'd go on items in review at some point or on an agenda item, but his name's Mike Angus, so I'm going to reach out to him, see if he'll come in and.
I would say discuss it with Mr. Palm.
Okay.
I'm not going to get on an agenda.
I just wanted to throw it out there to let you guys know.
Thank you. As I was saying, we do have one item in review, the review of residential requests for stop signs to reduce speed on Chambers Drive. And also the mayor now has brought up another one to look into, so we'll have those under review. Anything else? Seeing none, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you.
All right, let's call to order the Planning, Building, and Zoning Committee for the Village of Hoffman Estates on this October 11th, 2021. May we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Stanton.
Present.
Vice Chairman Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Noah.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McClellan.
Present.
We do have a quorum. I'm looking for approval of the minutes of September 13th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Anybody noticed any corrections or deletions that need to be made? Hearing seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. New business, number one, request by fiduciary Real Estate Development Incorporated for a courtesy review of a multifamily development located at the southeast corner of Higgins Road and Moonlight Boulevard. Do we have our people here? Please step forward. Why don't you give us your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Tony DeRosa with Fiduciary Real Estate Development. Address is 789 North Water Street, Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
Thank you. And do you understand that your appearance before the Planning, Building, and Zoning Committee shall not constitute any village board endorsement, support, or implied approval of the subject property? And you also understand that the final project approval or denial shall only occur through official village board action?
Yes, I do.
All right. Please proceed.
Great. Thank you. Good evening. Once again, my name is Tony DeRosa with Fiduciary Real Estate Development. Thank you for the opportunity to be before you this evening. We're going to share a presentation with you this evening. High-level overview of what we're going to talk about is who we are, who is Fiduciary Real Estate Development. I want to talk a little bit about the property and then talk about the opportunity and our vision for this property. A little bit about us. Fiduciary Real Estate Development, we're an experienced developer and real estate investor based in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. We focus on mixed-use developments, luxury market rate multifamily, as well as commercial developments. We were founded back in 1984. We've grown our business into becoming one of Wisconsin's largest real estate companies. Today, we have a portfolio that we own and manage in excess of $1.5 billion. In the last 10 years, we've raised over $400 million in investor equity and put in place over just about $1 billion of financing on our projects. In terms of our team, I introduced myself previously. I also have David Farrell and Ashley Poole, who work on our development team from Fiduciary here in the audience tonight. Our architect, design partner is H. Cam Architects. Mark Kurinski and Mark Hopkins are here this evening. And then our engineering consultant for the project is Manhard Consulting, Jared Plasek and Jim Frain here this evening. The next few slides, wanted to give a kind of feel for the portfolio of our work. I'm not going to get into specifics of what the project is, how big it was, when it was built, but really want to show, more importantly, the quality and the scope and different types of projects that we've done. You'll see a variety of different multifamily-type projects, from urban, three-story podium buildings with retail on the first floor, to more pure multifamily with no residential components. The pictures on your screen before you right now show some of our common area finishes, our clubhouse design. One of the things that we're known for is coming into a market and providing a best-in-class experience, both in terms of amenities as well as interior finishes. Couple slides of what our interiors typically look like, and this level of finish is indicative of what we'd be proposing here. In terms of the subject property that we're here tonight to talk about, it's roughly 13 acres, located at the southeast corner of Higgins Road and Moonlight Boulevard. It's the last vacant piece within the Moonlight Office Park. The existing office building that's located adjacent to us, to the west, is currently less than 25% occupied. This building was recently acquired this past summer by Olinbeck. Olinbeck is a Canadian-based real estate investment company. They're typically a long-term holder of their real estate, and they have plans for this property to re-lease the building. They're a group that owns more than 20 million square feet of Class B office space throughout both Canada and the United States. They specialize in buying buildings like this, buildings that are kind of undervalued or underutilized, and they deploy the necessary capital into them to lease them back up. This next slide is a letter of support. We shared our plans with Olinbeck to see if this was something that they were excited about. Did they like our vision for the property or not? I believe this letter was received on Friday, just after your staff packets went out, so we have prepared, I have copies of it here with me if anybody would like one, but it is on the slide right now. When we talked to Olinbeck about, would they like us as a neighbor with what the vision and our concept is for this property, they were very supportive about it. There's a couple of things, I'm going to read two excerpts out of this letter that kind of highlight their support for this. They said, quote, "We believe this high-end multifamily use of the vacant land directly adjacent to the office building that we acquired earlier this year would benefit us and the entire surrounding community." They also went on to say that to have a first-class, modern, market-rate housing option located adjacent to us will go a long way to us attracting both new employers and their respective employees to our building. So when we look at any piece of property, we do an analysis of what is the highest and best use for a property. And we go through the four major real estate product types. And the first one here is office. You look at, okay, should this vacant land remain as an office use designation? You look at, what's the state of the office market right now? Office demand has significantly declined over the past 10 years. That decline has been further accelerated in the last year and a half with the onset of COVID, the remote working trend, and we think this is a trend that is expected to continue into the future. Therefore, we look at, say, office, demand for brand-new Class A office building in this market on this site may not be very feasible. Then you move on to retail and look at, okay, does retail make sense for this property? And you look at what we call the Amazon Effect and the impact of e-commerce reducing the need for brick-and-mortar retail space in our country every day. We're all buying more and more things online. We're going to stores less and less. The site itself does not present itself as an ideal retail site for retailers today. Retailers have become so much more selective and fickle in how they look at where they want to locate. They want to be in the most visible of locations where there's high traffic counts, and they want to be anchored typically by a large-box user or grocery store to be successful. So we don't think this is a great retail site. Then you look at industrial. Would industrial work here? Great demand for industrial today. I'm sure there's people knocking on your door here and people want to locate along the corridor. And then you say, okay, is this the right location for industrial? Do the adjacencies next to existing housing and the hospital make sense? Probably not. The site doesn't lay out. The big industrial users want to build big-box spec space today. So that leaves us with multifamily. You look at the limited amount of multifamily development that has been built in the past three decades in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and we've been struggling to find any that have been built. You look at their significant pent-up demand in the market, not just in Hoffman Estates, but throughout the Chicago suburbs. There's a demand for luxury, market-rate rental options that don't exist. And this demand has been strong for the past few years. We've seen this firsthand, and that's one of the reasons why we're here this evening. Our firm has been actively building in the suburbs, and we're working on a project that's winding down in the Village of West Dundee, about 15 minutes west of here. And we see, we track everybody that comes to look at our apartments, that ends up moving in. We try and, we're trying to understand where they're coming from, where do they work? And we're kind of blown away by the number of people that are either working in Hoffman Estates, looking for a modern housing option, or those that actually live in Hoffman Estates that have moved west to West Dundee for something that is new and modern. We think that the Moonlight property meets the key criteria for a new housing option to be successful. We think it's great because of its proximity to the jobs, the medical campus, the office building next door, the grocery store, and the retail just to the south as well as to the north, as well as having interstate access make it ideal. We think it's a great housing options for those that work at the health complex and to create a situation where you can truly walk to work. In terms of the market demand, because there needs to be demand for what we're proposing here, our research shows, and we're seeing it firsthand, that there is pent-up demand here for a modern housing option. There's a lot of people that are looking to sell the homes in which they live, but they want to stay in the area. This community has an older housing stock with dated finishes and a lack of amenities. The village has a population in excess of just over 50,000, yet it's one of the few communities that does not have any new housing. So we see that as a great opportunity here. In terms of our demographic, who's going to live here? This is a group that's looking for an upscale community to call home. These are empty nesters. These are baby boomers. These are snowbirds, people that have homes that they spend their winters in in Arizona and Florida. These are young professionals. These are people that are typically choosing to rent. Our typical resident profile are people that work in healthcare, finance industry, insurance, real estate technology, police and fire, management positions, educational field, as well as the service industries. We typically see our projects outperforming the local demographic. What I mean by that is because we build a high-end product, we manage it first-class manner. We manage all of our projects ourselves. We typically are attracting an average household income that's greater than the community in which we're building, and we would expect the same here as well. Our monthly rent range will range on the low end of about $1,500 per month, upwards to $2,800 a month for our largest three-bedroom apartments. This is going to be a unique community. It's not going to be cookie cutter. We'll have attached garages. Two-thirds of our building will have its own private direct entrances with an abundant amenity package and a clubhouse. As part of this, we want to look at, okay, if somebody's looking to move to Hoffman Estates, whether you live in the community or you work here, you're looking to move here, what are your housing options today? So is there a true opportunity here? So this slide shows, this is what the housing stock looks like. Average occupancies of these projects range about 97% to 99%, which is very good. That means there's a strong market pent-up demand. Typically, when your market's in equilibrium, you're about 93% to 94% occupied. In terms of our proposed development, these would be three-story buildings, more of a townhouse-type style, with private direct entrances for the first two floors. The third floor will be serviced by a stairwell and a common corridor. These will be high-end homes spread out over multiple three-story buildings with slab-on-grade construction. We'll have attached, as well as detached, garages. Some of our apartment amenities will include private balconies, quartz countertops, washer and dryer in every apartment, upgraded stainless steel appliance packages. And then in terms of the community amenities, we'll have a resort clubhouse open to all of our residents. Within that, we have a fitness center. We have a lot of walkability, a lot of connection points within the development, as well as onsite property management. In terms of development details, a lot of these things I touched on, walk-in closets in every bedroom. The picture here is kind of indicative, maybe not necessarily the colors, but in terms of the quality of the finishes that you would expect here. Do you want to look and feel the finishes on this slide here, give you a feel for what you would expect? This finished package is typical of what you would see or compare to a brand-new, single-family So the property is located within the recently adopted Barrington Road I-90 Subarea Plan. The goals of that plan were to enhance walkability and transit access, create a more productive and sustainable land use mix. and sustainable land-use mix. Adding residential here will clearly help the existing retail in the meadowed area. As we know, rooftops are a direct supporter to retail businesses. This adopted plan contemplated and showed housing for this property at even actually a more dense level than what we're proposing. The plan that was a part of your adopted plan showed upwards of 452 apartments on this property, and our plan is proposed at 296. What I'd like to do now is turn it over real briefly to Mark Korinski from HKM Architects to talk about the site plan, configuration, and just a few high-level notes on the design of the buildings.
Can I ask you a question before we do that?
Yes.
What made you decide to go with apartments versus like a condo units?
Oh, sure. A couple of things. One, the market for apartments is strong in terms of what are people looking for. There's been a huge shift in housing preferences amongst all demographic groups, from young professionals all the way up to baby boomers and empty nesters in terms of they're looking at housing very differently than they used to. You have the young people that with job uncertainty, they like the flexibility of, you know what, I can sign a lease for a year, I don't know where I'm going to work next year, so I like that flexibility. We see a lot of people that are downsizing out of homes, don't want to own a home anymore, don't want to deal with paying the taxes. They like to travel, they like to spend their winters down south, but they have family ties to the Midwest that they like to keep coming back for. So, they like that flexibility of being able to rent as they're making those decisions. You also have people that it's very difficult to afford to have a down payment for a home, that they need their creditworthiness, but they don't want to make that financial commitment. So, you don't see a lot of condos being built in the marketplace for that demographic reason, and also just from a financeable reason, you don't see a lot of condo projects being financed by banks today.
Thank you for the answer.
Mark?
Good evening. My name's Mark Korinski with HKM Architects and Planners, and we are at 43 South Vale in Arlington Heights. I just will be, I will be brief. But the project aims, and Tony hit on it, it aims to create a walkable residential neighborhood here. And the slide that he showed you before actually showed one concept of it, and it was one big box. You may have heard of a Texas doughnut or a wrap building or something like that, it's a very large building and apartment. You're seeing those throughout the North Shore, and we've done those throughout the suburbs of Chicago. But it really starts with the product, and he sort of glossed over that this is direct entry, that two-thirds of the units have a direct entry. And what that means is it's not your typical corridor building, that the first floor and the second-floor units, they have their own entrance. We're seeing that really popular, even pre-COVID, but now with COVID, minimizing going down a common corridor and things like that. And you're seeing more and more of these apartments, dogs being in the apartments, and the people that have the dogs love that direct access so they can get in and out. And a guest comes, visit, they come directly to their door. So, it all starts with that, creating that friendly neighborhood, because it lives and reads like a townhome with that individual entrance for everybody's unit. The front doors also are on all four sides of the buildings. So, what that allowed us to do is we're blending the architecture and the land plan, is we have front doors facing the perimeter of the site. So, we've got a lot of perimeter on the site between Higgins and Moon Lake, and we've got front doors facing towards those streets. So, we don't have a backyard, and we don't have to screen and create this separation between the roadway. We have a halo to the neighborhood of front doors and people's space and walkability. So, the concept of the plan that you see in front of you from the upper left, you enter in off the existing access point on Moon Lake. There's an existing curb cut right there, and you immediately come in, you turn left, and you go into the residential neighborhood to sort of separate the residential neighborhood and create a character that's slightly different than the office building that's right there. And right at that halo is the clubhouse, and that's the community gathering space. It's also the leasing center. But that's where all the residents can come, all their mail is there, their Amazon drop-offs are there. So, you've got all of that activity happening there, it's a clubhouse, there's a seasonal pool outside, there's fire pits outside, there's a fitness center inside. So, it's the gathering place for all the residents. That happens right there. The other thing that you may not see on the plan, but unlike some apartment complexes, when you pull in, there's parallel parking in a street, a quasi-street right in front of the clubhouse. So, you may, in some neighborhoods or apartment, or especially older apartment complexes, you drive in and you're instantly in a parking lot, and you're driving through a parking lot to get from one building to the next. Here, what we're doing is we've got this internal street where we've created parallel parking, a sidewalk, and then street trees. So, you've literally got bumpouts and street trees and that sort of character of a quasi-street that goes from building to building to building. So, if you look at each building, each one's got parallel parking, drop-off, guest parking, and all that directly in front of the building. There are clusters of parking, because we have street parking and grade-level parking, but you can imagine that you could have a, invite a guest and wayfind simply through this community to get there. And it all talks about and plays off of that walkability and creating an environment. The southeast entrance is the existing curb cut. Right now, there's a curb cut, then there's a road that comes up, and we're using most of that, which is currently being used for the office, so we're sharing that. And the median break that's already in Moon Lake is being used right there. As I mentioned earlier, it's multiple smaller buildings. This does a couple of things for us, but it brings that scale down. It's more of a residential scale. Some of these apartment buildings, we've got 250, 300 units, they start to be large, they start to take up a small city block. So, we've got eight buildings to try and break it up. And then as you get to the architecture and the character, you're going to see familiar character with this. You're going to see stuff that is familiar to a residential neighborhood, is a three-story townhome, or a three-story or a two-story, single-family home, or a duplex. So, you see, you know, familiar details, you're seeing a pitched roof, you're seeing gable ends, you're seeing brick or stone on the first floor, you're seeing vertical and horizontal siding. You know, this is a concept, but this is sort of that farmstead modern that you're seeing pop up throughout the suburbs and in the city of the architectural style right now. But it's all familiar, it's all residential and comfort architecture. So, and the other thing you see is you see those internal garages. Every unit doesn't get an internal garage, but there are some internal garages. But you don't have one whole side of the building, all internal garages. You have a combination of some internal garages, and then you're seeing front doors to get to the first and the second-floor units. And even the end of the building, you're seeing those characters, the balconies, the porches, and the like. And again, you're seeing some garages, but you're seeing front doors and that walkability and all that on all sides of the buildings. So, what we're really doing is working the architecture and the land plan together to create a neighborhood here where, you know, a little bit of creativity, because the initial thought is it's an office complex. So, how do you take an office complex that was never built, because the market never supported it, and create a neighborhood that people can live and embrace and enjoy living in?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So, lastly...
Sure, go ahead.
I can see the first and the second floor. On the third floor, how do they get, how do the people get to the third floor?
There'd be two stairwells in the building, one on each end, that would take you up to the third floor, and there's a hallway in the third floor where you could access your apartment home.
Okay, so on either side, there's stairways to go up?
That is correct.
Okay.
First two floors, you have your own front door, you don't, right. You're welcome. So, in closing, you know, we're here tonight for your feedback on our vision for this property. We think the benefits are significant to the village and to the community. We think this truly provides a housing option that we know doesn't exist, but we know that there's demand, we know that there's people that, whether they work here or live here, that would embrace this. We know there's a significant increase in tax base to be had. Current tax bill is just shy of about $200,000 on the property, fully built and stabilized. We're projecting a tax bill of just over $1.6 million. We also think there's an economic benefit here of additional consumer spending. You take it, you take a look at the number of people that would live here, some are new, some are not, some are current residents, some are new to the area, you take a small fraction of what their disposable income is, you look at that multiple, and, you know, over 10 years, it's, there's $10 million of potential, just additional consumer spending that goes into the stores, the coffee shops, the grocery stores. And at the end of the day, and I touched on this earlier, you look at what is the highest and best use for this property? How does this tie in with the area plan that was adopted of providing productive, mixed uses? And we think that this type of development, not just any type of multifamily, but what we're proposing and the way we manage and put our projects together, we think is the highest and best use for this property.
So, let me ask you a question. You said you walk up to the third floor. You have no elevators in these buildings at all?
That is correct.
Do we have something in our codes that need to require an elevator for a third floor?
Barrington Lakes doesn't have elevators.
We could look through the code. I'm not, I'm not certain if that would, if it would be triggered or not based on the total unit count within the building, type of, what's that?
The type of units that they are.
Type of units, okay. Yeah, we can certainly look into that.
I'd be curious to find out whether we do or we don't. You're talking to a guy who used to work for Beacons Moving Company. Third floor to third floor is not a pretty thing.
No, one of the things with that is, you know, trying to find the balancing point between you put elevators into building, no question on the first two floors. We're building this product, you know, west of here, south of here, first two floors, no questions. You look at the third floor, and I think what that allows us to do is provide a price point and is going to attract the younger demographic that will walk the stairs, not the old demographic. And it allows us to create a price point, because at the end of the day, you know, we need to make sure we fit within the box of affordability, generally speaking. You start putting elevators, and you start making these big buildings with structured parking, costs go up, rents go up, and all of a sudden, you're overbuilding a product type, and you're putting rents that you're pricing a lot of the residents of the community out of. So, we're trying to find that right balance between demand for the product at an affordable rent level as well.
I understand. I got another piece of property if you're interested. Gulf and Barrington, south of Mariano's. There's a piece of property there that would probably love to have your project there.
Owned by Menards?
Yep.
Yes. You know, we look at a lot of different properties, we've looked at that one. There's many properties that are for sale that are not realistic in terms of seller expectations of price or other terms, and we have looked at that.
Okay. All right. Trustee Mills?
Couple of questions for you. First of all, will you be taking ownership of the detention pond?
So, the detention basin is its own separate tax parcel, and that is currently owned by Olinbeck. So, when Olinbeck bought the office building, they also acquired the detention basin. There's a declaration in place that governs all these parcels within Moon Lake that dictates that the basin is shared amongst all of the parcels. So, we have rights to use that detention basin alongside of them.
But you wouldn't be responsible for maintaining?
No, the way that declaration is existing and recorded against the property is the owner of the office building is responsible for the maintenance of the basin.
Okay.
And we share in the cost to maintain it.
Okay. So, now, these apartments on the first and second floor, none of them are two-level apartments, they're...
Correct. Singles, yep.
Okay.
Either on the first floor or second floor.
All right. Have you, when you come in, if you do get as far as coming in for a planning hearing and that, some things that I think they would be looking for is, first of all, your breakdown of school-age children, if you foresee how that would affect the schools and that, you'll need to make that discussion with the school boards.
And typically, and I can address that on a high level for you, our developments don't attract typically a ton of kids. We typically see about 10 school-age kids per 100 apartments, so of a development of this size, could you expect to see 30 school-age children? Some might already be within the district, some would be new to the district.
Yeah, I agree with you, but I'm just telling you, that's something that'll probably come up.
Understood.
How would you be phasing in these buildings? Do you plan on building them all at once? Are you going to do a certain number of buildings to begin with?
So, the last thing we want to do is start a project and not finish it. So, we would look this as one single project, we start and we finish. We'd phase in the buildings. So, we'd start, you know, maybe we start the northwest corner of the site, let's say at Higgins and Moon Lake, and you'd start construction. It might take 12 months to complete your first building, and say, your clubhouse, then maybe it's every four weeks or so, another building would be completed. But we would start the project and finance it and do everything associated with it to build out the entire project as one single phase.
That would be something that we would be looking for too, with the progression is. And also, the other thing would be a breakdown on the interior parking versus on-street. You know, will every, not every apartment's going to have interior parking, but will they have designated parking areas?
Correct.
For them?
Yep, and typically what we would do is sometimes we reserve spaces. We have the garages available. Typically, the garage would go to typically like a two-bedroom apartment, because that's typically a demographic that will pay a little bit more, and they care a little bit more about putting their car within a garage space. So, we have, there's some rationale behind it, but we'd be happy to, you know, explain that further.
Yeah, that would be something I would be looking for is what type of breakdowns you'd be having on parking, and I know the plan commission probably will too. The last thing, and this is just a suggestion I've always made to developers coming in, meet with your neighboring associations, because you do have an association around you there. Never hurts to meet with them and start out on a good foot with them.
Good advice, thank you.
That's it.
Anyone else? Yes, trustee Plafis.
I had a question also about the detention. It looks like you have a building, D, right up against the detention. How would they, owners or the caretakers of the detention, access the detention, given that you've kind of walled it off with the buildings?
In terms of maintaining the detention, there would still be adequate room to get around the buildings. I think that's have to be part of the overall planning process to make sure that, you know, if there's a tractor or whatnot to cut grass, that there still is access. The declaration that's in place grants easements over all these parcels for not just utilities, but for access for them to maintain the detention. One of the reasons our site is laid out in such a way is because this was laid out for office buildings with utilities cutting all over.
Right. Which brings me into a different question, why, something that's laid out for office buildings is zoned RPD. But nevertheless, back to the detention question, so you were saying that each building has entrances on all four sides? So, if I'm in D, I could have a door that opens up into the detention side, correct?
Correct, we'd have sidewalks around the buildings.
Okay. So, I guess the question for zoning, would we rezone this, Jenny? Because I always thought it was '03 or '02. RPD for an office building complex, I mean, I agree with the fact that the office building that's there is hideous, and I have concerns about anybody pumping a ton of money into it to get it above 50%, but that's not the discussion. What do we do from a zoning side?
So, within the RPD district, there is an overall general plan that kind of designates the specific uses. Currently, it shows three five-story office buildings for this particular property, two of which are on the 13 acres that's being discussed. So, that plan itself would need to be amended, it wouldn't necessarily need to be rezoned, it would just be, the process itself is very similar to a rezoning, but it would be an amendment to that general plan that was approved for this particular development.
These essentially, we're making these A1s based on the zoning code.
Right, right, and there's a little bit more flexibility within the RPD district than the general plan, so we would be able to look at the site overall and what made sense in terms of setbacks and lot coverage.
Sure. That's all for me.
Yes.
One question that just came to mind, do you have any, or plan to have potentially, any agreements or interplay with the office building owner in terms of ensuring that they make a certain amount of investment, they keep the building up, maybe there's a restriction on uses? Have you explored any of that at all to make sure that your project and that project are copacetic?
We, that's a very good question. We don't have any agreements with them. So, we currently have a contract or an option to purchase this property, subject to obtaining the approvals. If we don't get the approvals from the village, we're not going to proceed. We were introduced to Olinbeck, you know, they purchased the property in the summer. We don't have any agreements with them, nor does the current landowner of the land we're under contract on, to my understanding, have any agreements. under contract on, to my understanding, have any agreements with them in terms of they have to spend X dollars or do anything. When we met with staff, we'd actually talked a lot about the office building, and one of my questions too was for the owner of that building, okay, what are they going to do? Who are they, right? Are they just kind of a fly-by-the-seat-of-their-pants type group, and they bought this at auction, and it's going to look like, you know, 25% occupied forever? Because obviously, we have a vested interest because we're making a $60 million investment in our project. So as I got to understanding kind of who Olimbeck is, they're based out of Canada. They own over 20 million square feet. They specialize in properties like this, properties that are significantly vacant. They're long-term holders. They don't sell, is the way it's been explained to us. Very well-capitalized. They love the adjacency to the medical, and obviously, I think that's, you know, there's some synergies there. There used to be some. The building needs some TLC. Are they going to reskin the building? I don't know what their plans are going to be. So we don't have any agreements per se, and I don't think there ever will be any agreements between us and them of you have to do this or uses. I think at some level, we have to follow, you know, rely on what does the zoning allow for that office building. What we have talked to them about though is we need to work together on some level in terms of, you know, we're utilizing the existing access points. Those aren't going to change. Those make sense. But can we clean up and dress up both entrances? Can we improve the landscaping? Is there some lighting on that ring road that probably needs some help? Is there signage that we could both benefit from? Does the ring road need to be repaved or overlaid with new asphalt because it hasn't been touched in 20 years? So things like that, some of the cosmetic-type things, I think will help. It is nice that, well, it may not be the previous building in the world, it is foursided in terms of architecture, so the backside's not a horrible eyesore. We feel comfortable in terms of putting our use adjacent to them. We like the transitional zoning. As you go from, to the east of our site, you've got more, you know, four-family, smaller-scale multifamily transitioning to a little more dense multifamily to office with the hospital. So from a pure zoning standpoint and how those uses play together, we actually think that works pretty well. We think there's great synergies where we think us being here helps them lease that building and vice versa. So, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think, yes, you have. I think it's just to make sure going forward that their commitments are true and that they're going to move forward with that. To your point, you don't want a half-vacant office building next to a brand-new significant investment that your team is making, so.
Correct.
Trustee Mills.
You mentioned your building, something out in West Dundee. Where is it and what's the name of it?
Oh, sure. It's called The Seasons at Randall Road. It's on Randall Road, just north of Higgins.
Okay.
Just south of the rec center, on the west side of the road.
Okay.
It was a project, it was a two-phase project. The first phase was 300 apartments, all two-story, and we just started a second phase of another 80 apartments because we had such great success with the first phase.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Palafas.
Which the pictures, by the way, look exactly like ours that you're showing us. So it'll be the exact same concept?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The pictures that I'm looking at for The Seasons at Randall Road look exactly like what you're showing here in the profile.
Different, so that's a two-story building. What we're proposing here are all three-story buildings.
Why the difference, if you don't mind me asking?
Oh, sure. In terms of, from a density standpoint, in terms of, you know, meeting the market of how do you make a project viable, financially feasible, and, you know, what locations do you pick and choose to increase your density? What we're doing at The Seasons at Randall Road is a very suburban, low-dense, where about 10 units to the acre, spread out, not a 13-acre site between existing, you know, commercial and medical-type uses.
So, I never envisioned apartments here. Just going to be the first one out with it. And that building, that office building is hideous. I was kind of hoping you'd come in to say, I don't know, you said reskining, I just think it needs to be knocked down. And the parking lots are equally as hideous as the building. But you're saying there's no option to buy that, even if our approval was contingent on something faster happening with that, other than the Canadian REIT that owns it. Am I correct in?
Yeah, so we don't control that building. We don't have any rights to it. We're not here tonight to say, hey, you know what, we're going to buy it and tear it down. What we're here tonight to say is, hey, you know what, you've got somebody that just bought this. They're along, if you just look at their track record, you can do your homework online, Google them. They don't sell, they reinvest, they re-lease these buildings. So that's what we know, right? We're looking at the land around it saying, you know what, I don't think probably many people envisioned apartments on this site a few years ago. But I don't think anybody can say, you know what, we envision office here today either. The office market is flooded with more Class B and C office space than will ever get filled in the western suburbs. There's an abundance of it. What this site has going for it are some of the things that I talked about earlier in terms of adjacency to medical. You've got retail to the east, you've got retail to the south, you've got your grocery stores, you've got your interstate access. That's what makes this pocket desirable. I think that's probably why your consultants identified multifamily as a feasible use in the Barrington I-90 sub-area plan. This is a dynamic site around it, but we can't, we're not here to do anything about the office building. We're here to say, you know what, we can enhance this. We enhance it with the 13 acres of housing around it. You want to help the office? That's how you help the office.
I'm not saying you were here to say anything about the office building. What I'm saying is I wish you were here to say something about the hideous building, regardless of who owns it.
I wish I could.
And you have no desire to buy it, is what you're saying.
No, I do not.
Okay. I'm binary.
We don't specialize in that.
Yeah, no, I understand. That's all for me, for now.
It's an interesting project, and honestly, the office building probably could use these apartments around it. Maybe it would attract people to come in. There might be a synergy there like you're talking about. Anyone else with any other questions?
I just think it's interesting, them laying this out, and even as far as the buildings itself and being two-story and three-story, I think it'll be very attractive on that corner. Absolutely. Thank you for coming in to show us that. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So if I could just add one last thing. So what we're here for tonight is some...
Feedback?
Feedback, guidance. Because we're at the point of, you know what, either we continue to move forward because we think this is something the village would like to see, or if the board says tonight, you know what, Tony, thanks for presenting, looks good, but not a fit in our community, no hard feelings, and we'll move on. So if I could get some feedback of, hey...
For me, you have your chance. You can do it. I think trustee Gata has already indicated that he's of the same mind.
Yes, I have before.
Do we all, do you want to poll?
Well, I think you really should.
I don't think we're supposed to.
I'm not looking for a poll. What I'm trying to avoid is, when we pursue an opportunity like this, we make significant investment, and we know it's a cost of doing business. I don't want to show up in 60 days and come back and say, hey, we did this, we engineered it, we designed it, we were great. And I come before you and say, we don't want this anymore. Can you buy the office building? So I appreciate the feedback, and if there's any other feedback that any other trustees would be offering of, would you like to continue, would you like us to continue to work on this or not?
My answer is yes.
My answer is yes.
But everybody else, I think, wants to be silent. Trustee Palafas.
Where I'm on the fence, to be honest with you, aside from the hideous building that you clearly said you're not going to buy, is the third-floor piece that trustee Stanton asked about. I see the two floors, you know, and that concept working. It's hard for me to say no, given that this is a part of the Barrington area subplan that was across the street, literally kitty-corner. But yeah, that third story, whether, you know, we need elevators or not, is, you know, viable in terms of, you know, what we allow so far, or if we have to set a new precedence.
Trustee Mills.
Have you considered doing the two-story here with the separate entrances without putting a third story on, or is that not within the realm of financial security on this?
That is correct. It's not financially feasible here.
And that leads me to another question, the second-floor ones. You said they have a separate entrance, where they walk in and you go up a flight of stairs to it, is that it?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, being us oldies but goodies up here, sometimes I share what trustee Stanton was saying about the elevators. You know, I was curious if you were going to have them. I know we have other apartment buildings in town with two and three stories that do not have elevators either, I think, but it just concerns me when you have those long corridors on the third floor too. You know, you said you have an entrance at one end, at the other end, and then it is the long corridor.
Which is, that's actually, in terms of context of other apartment buildings, it's actually not that long of a corridor. So if you have three floors...
How many apartments per floor then?
About 30. Each building has about 37, 36, 38 apartments.
Okay.
So you divide that by three, and you're talking about 12 apartments, six doors on one side, six on another.
Yeah.
So when you look at, you know, the size of an apartment building, typically, these are actually small buildings. And, you know, the code is one thing. If the code allows a three-story without an elevator, that's one thing. But I also encourage you to think differently. You know, housing has evolved so much in the last, you know, 10 years, even the last five years of different demographics. We don't want to just be, you know, this is all young professionals, or this is all, you know, skewed older. So people look at housing differently. So if we're trying to make sure we also don't price out the entire market, you start adding elevators because that's what some buildings have. All of a sudden, we start pricing residents of the community out of it. There's a lot of 20-somethings, 30-somethings that would love to live here, nurses, people working next door, they don't mind walking the stairs.
No, I find it to be a very interesting concept.
Yeah.
And the buildings are very nicely done.
Thank you.
The only thing I would differ with you on is with it being a boon to transportation because it's a pretty long walk in the winter to get from where the buildings are over to the transit station. That would be the only thing I would argue with you about. But it would be something different, and we haven't really put up any apartment buildings in town since back, well, when the ones were built back behind what's Mariano's now, I think. Those are probably about the last apartments we put up in town. So that's been quite a while.
That's one of the things that attracted us to this opportunity, is we know the demand's here because there hasn't been any built. You can't dispute that. We're seeing firsthand, I mentioned in my presentation, we're seeing people that work in your community driving out to The Seasons at Randall Road. We're seeing people moving from your community because they want something. They don't want to move east because if you move east, it's too expensive. So they're moving west where they can afford something that's new and modern, and they're moving into our building.
What do you foresee your rents to be at?
At the low end, starting at $1,500, and on the high end, $2,800 for a three-bedroom. And that's where the market is today.
Okay.
Market's changed a lot since the last time housing was built here.
Well, I would say good luck to you with the project, and, you know, you've got some work to do yet on it, so it is an interesting concept.
Thank you. Yeah, we weren't here tonight to have all the answers, pretend to have all the answers. We know there's still a ton of work to do.
That's why you do a courtesy review.
Right, and we appreciate the opportunity, and that's what staff had directed us, and so we appreciate that, and it's more of, do you like what you see or no? And we know we still have some work to do.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, trustee Arnett.
I do think it's a good concept, and, I mean, I've been around the area in Hoffman. I've seen a lot of changes and stuff. I do have one question. Chief Wax, you might be able to help me out with this. Does Station 20 do any kind of training over in that area with, like hoses or anything that's going to kind of interlude with those apartments going up?
Well, generally not. If we do, we'll do it in the back parking lot of the fire station if we need a little more area, or in the past, we may have done it in the parking lot of the business office. But we can always find parking lots to do our training in.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I had to call this tonight.
Great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We're going home now?
Yeah.
You wish. All right, number two, request approval. I should ask, does anybody need a break at this point?
Yeah.
Yes or no? Yes? Okay, let's take...
Motion to recess for 10 minutes.
Second.
All right. Well, let's, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we're recessed for 10 minutes. All right, I'd like to call back to order the planning zoning, planning building and zoning committee for the Village of Hoffman Estates. May we have a roll call to reestablish quorum?
Chairman Stanton.
Present.
Vice Chairman Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Noel.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Yeah, quorum is still here. Okay. We are now at number two, request approval of an ordinance deleting subsection 903.7, flexible arm sprinkler assemblies from section 11-1-2, which is additions, insertions, deletions, and changes of the Hoffman Estates municipal code.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I think it's Ryan, right?
Ryan, yes.
Ryan, okay.
You were close.
I was close.
You had most of the sounds right in.
Almost.
All right, please tell us what this is about.
So this is essentially just a cleanup of an outdated code in chapter 11 of the municipal code. Several code cycles ago, roughly 15, 20 years ago, this amendment was adopted as a way to kind of make up for poor installation practices that we were seeing out in the field. At the time, this product was kind of newer and still evolving, so to combat the issue of this, we limited the use of this sprinkler application. So in a typical commercial environment, you would see a main sprinkler line and some branch lines all above the ceiling. They're hard-piped into place, and our current code requires that those sprinkler heads are, that you would see at the ceiling level, all hard-piped in as well. So with this flexible sprinkler assembly method, it utilizes a braided hose that you can kind of position the exact height and location of that sprinkler head once the ceiling height has been established and is in place. So if you look at your packet, there's a picture sample that kind of goes over the look of what it looks, you know.
Yeah, I see it.
So, over time, these products became much more desirable due to their ease and extreme flexibility in the positioning of them. The anchoring methods have also dramatically improved in alleviating those issues that we saw early on. So today, these flexible sprinkler assemblies are commonplace in commercial buildings, and the ability to use them provides a substantial cost savings to the property owner or contractor. And they're already approved by the International Fire Code, which we have adopted by the village. So in conjunction with the fire department, we have determined that these are an acceptable option for sprinkler applications.
Do they have any more leakage than any other?
No, they don't. No, they don't. They're, they've, like I said, they've come a long way with, you know, how they function. The main issue that we were seeing was just how they were anchored to the ceiling grid, you know, at the time, and kind of the issues that if an activation occurred, that they could be kind of spraying in different directions and not focused on where the, you know, they needed to, to be spraying out water. So there's, they're very reliable, they've, they're a proven method, they're listed by testing agencies, and like I said, they're, they're approved by the International Fire Code. So this is just allowing our business owners and contractors a use of an, of an application that is already approved.
Any questions? Yes, trustee Gata first.
First, you're only talking about commercial, you're not talking about residential, is that correct?
Correct. I mean, this is, this is primarily just used in a commercial setting. It's a different type of application when it gets to residential, and, and these are really just a commercial type of device.
So this would only be for commercial, though, not for residential?
Correct, yeah, there's, they're not typically used in residential settings. This is really just for those commercial settings.
Chief, would you mind answering some questions on this with your experience? As far as, have you?
Happy to.
The, with, have you seen these in operation in your career?
Yes.
And?
And there hasn't been any problems. The concerns from 20 years ago have been resolved, and these are accepted, they're part of the code, and they work well.
And even though, as far as the attachment into the supplier, the pipe that's supplying, that, no problems in corrosion or anything else?
No problems.
That answers my question. Thank you both. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Plauffus.
Brian, do you know if we have any buildings that have these ready?
I don't know if we do, because pretty much as soon as these were kind of introduced into the market, the amendment was, was put into place to take the use of them out of play. So I know we've had plenty of submissions over the last 20 years.
That was my next question.
Yeah, they would like to use them, which typically resolves and, results in them having a denial and have to, you know, do revisions to this. So this would, you know, really benefit those contractors when they're applying.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Number three, request approval of a term sheet for utility extension for public, or I'm sorry, for Plum Farms Development Project.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Eric, you want to take this?
Yes, sir, thank you. So before you tonight is a proposed term sheet that staff has been working on with the property owner at Plum Farms, and as trustee Stanton just mentioned, this will go ahead and provide for the reimbursement of the cost of the extension of utilities, water, and sewer to the property, and then at a later date, there will need to be a lift station installed, and so this would also provide for that reimbursement as well. As you know, there are three parcels out at Plum Farms. Of the three parcels, two of them do have a tax increment financing district in place, and so that would be the funding source for the reimbursement. As development occurs out there, the increment will increase, and then that increment comes back to the village. Utility extensions, utility work are a TIF-eligible expense, and the agreement is, as you've noted and looked at and reviewed in the term, in the packet, is fairly straightforward, right? And so developer goes ahead, or I should say, the owner goes ahead and installs the utilities, and then is reimbursed for that cost as the increment comes back. In there, you will see, though, that the village will be reimbursing 100% of that increment once our expenses are paid for on a upfront and an annual basis. And so that is a little bit more aggressive than what you would, might see in other, in other situations with the village, but the idea is to get the developer or the owner reimbursed and paid off as quickly as possible so we can complete, just complete the agreement. And so if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Mayor.
Is there going to be an end date to this, or can he start in the year 2525 and still have the same deal?
He would have to start.
What's the performance, is there a performance?
Sure, yes. He has to start within six months of approval of the RDA. So what'll happen, too, just procedurally, is if the board is in concurrence with this or has any changes or modifications, those go back, and then that is all folded into a redevelopment agreement, and that redevelopment agreement is brought back to you for your final consideration and approval. So this is just the main business points that we want to make sure we're all in alignment on before we go back and do some of the heavy lifting.
Six months with no automatic extensions built up.
Right now, as proposed, it's, would have to commence within six months or the agreement goes away.
Trustee Plauffus.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with 100% because it ties up that amount of money, be it what, 2.8 million? Am I doing my math right? But I could see something working for me, like 7525. Especially if we need to negotiate with other government bodies, if you know who I'm talking about. That might come into play. That's just my opinion.
I wonder who you're talking about.
Just, I'm just saying, we, 100% ties up all the money for what might be, you know, it just doesn't give us any wiggle room, and I think we might need some.
Anyone else with any questions? Yes, trustee Mills.
Would those village costs include any legal fees?
Somebody sues us?
Yep.
Right, so there are, what's contemplated are the normal expenses, annual expenses that the village incurs, but hearing the feedback tonight, though, these are, this is the good feedback I'm looking for, and that stuff we would roll into the redevelopment agreement.
Okay. And do we have, now we've got the 180 days, what's the limit on the time to get this RDA in completed?
You know, I usually say that the villages are not the rate, the rate-limiting step in situations like this. You know, a lot of it's going to come down to how much the developer wants and the owner wants to negotiate over these terms. I've already talked to corporation counsel, we're going to have a standard, you know, one of the things I want to work on, not only for this project, but in future RDAs, we create this standard redevelopment agreement, right, that's almost like a template, and a lot of this stuff should be plug and play. And so we, you know, from our perspective, we don't want to get into a extensive negotiation over those terms. It kind of is, it is what it is, and that's why we brought these business terms back, because these are really the meat and potatoes of what we're talking about.
Because they don't want us to get into a situation where it takes, and, you know, I mean, you can stress this, we, since we do have a six-month limit in there, they don't want to get this, extend this out, so this way they're stuck in the middle of winter.
Right.
So let's stress that point, if this does get approved, that we want to get this done as quickly as possible so we can keep it within that timeframe. Let's face it, until we get those utilities out to that site, nothing's going to happen. And we've got to get the utilities out to that site. That's it.
Anyone else up here with any questions?
Plauffus has his hand up again.
That is a hand up? Okay.
I was just going to ask, we have a motion and a second. I'm willing to modify my second or make another motion for the 7525 if there's consensus that that is a better idea than 100%.
Yeah.
I'll amend the motion also, then.
Then I'll amend my second, such that the, you know, numbers are 75.
Need a roll call on that, or can we just do the regular ayes?
Yeah, because it's, this will not be coming to the board next week because this is just getting your direction, and so the next step would be, we'd go back, renegotiate. So to answer your question, it just could be a voice vote.
I think he's talking about the amendment.
Oh, on the, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Does the amendment need a motion? Is the question?
Well, no, no.
Boy, you're amending your original motion.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure. That's what you're asking, right?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
All right, all right, I guess all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now for the actual motion.
All right, now, we have the motion of the request approval of the term sheet for utility extension for Public Farms Development Project. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We move on. Number four, request approval of a sub-recipient agreement with Northwest Housing Partnership, NWHP, to administer the community development block grant, CDBG, single-family rehabilitation program.
Can I make a motion that it, we do it as with an amended agreement that we were given tonight?
Yes.
Not the one that's in the packet?
Correct.
I'll second that.
All right. So why don't you take us on a ride here?
Absolutely. This is the annual agreement with Northwest Housing Partnership to administer the single-family rehab program on behalf of the village. The program is fully funded by HUD, it's part of the village's CDBG program, and through this program, low and moderate level households can have code, safety, and weatherization improvements made. Projects might include roof repairs, window replacements, or bathroom update, and a zero-interest loan of up to $25,000 is available per project. Northwest Housing Partnership qualifies applicants, coordinates the construction process, and finalizes the closing documents currently. This past year, one project was completed, and then also three loans from previous years were returned. For the upcoming year, $120,000 has been allocated for the program, and up to 15% of the program costs can be used to reimburse Northwest Housing Partnership for administration of the program.
Anyone with any questions up here on this? Yes, trustee Plauffus.
Ryan, I think all the CDBG work you're doing is fantastic, and Robin?
That's Paula Bush.
I remember meeting you at the Plots concert, so thanks for coming and sitting through our meeting the entire evening. But again, I just think this is great work, and appreciate all your time that you put in on this, and it's great having Northwest Housing Partnership, you know, as a partner here.
Trustee Mills.
Having known some people who have gone through this process over the years, they are extremely thankful for it, and I have got, come up with some good results for them. So thank you again.
It's good to hear. All right, we have a motion that was amended, and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And number five, request approval of a sub-recipient agreement with Northwest Housing Partnership, NWHP, to administer the community development block grant, CDBG, COVID response rental assistance program.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Brian, you want to explain this one?
Absolutely. This is an agreement to have Northwest Housing Partnership administer their COVID response rental assistance program on behalf of the village. This program is also fully funded by HUD as part of the village's CDBG-CV allocation, which is the COVID funding that the village has received. Northwest Housing Partnership will screen applicants and award grants to village residents for rental and utility bill reimbursement. In order for applicants to meet HUD eligibility, household income will have to be at the low to moderate level, and applicants must be able to prove that their hardship is related to the COVID pandemic. This would, this would include a loss of employment, reduced work hours, time off due to illness, or time off while taking care of family that are affected by the virus. Grants can reimburse unpaid rent or utilities going back to March of 2020. Each grant is capped at $12,000, and total program funding is at $173,860, with up to 15% of that being able to be utilized for administrative work completed by Northwest Housing Partnership.
Thank you. Trustee Plauffus.
Do you hear a lot of demand for this, or, I don't know, maybe Anna, maybe even in your role, do you get a lot of demand for this, or?
We get a lot of questions about rental assistance, but a lot of it is not COVID-related. So this is where, when you start looking at the eligibility, and then they start, you know, asking about income, sometimes the income doesn't measure, so you have to meet some of the points in order, but we do get a lot of questions about it. So we refer to, you know, you guys to see if they're eligible for it or not.
Absolutely. This has the dual eligibility of the CDBG, which is low to moderate, and making sure that people, the applicants, meet those requirements, and then it also has to have that COVID tieback, which can also, is just one more hurdle that was put in, really by HUD as part of this funding. But we have seen that some of our neighbors have rolled out similar programs and have been able to utilize more than half of the money just in the, in the past year. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to use the funding in its entirety.
So Ryan, just for clarity, we don't determine eligibility, it would be Ms. Bush and her team that would?
They'll screen for eligibility, yes. Meeting HUD, HUD regulations.
Sure, sure. All right, thanks.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Leads us to reports, and we have four for information only. First is the Planning Division Monthly Report. Any questions or concerns on that? That'll be received and filed. Second is the Code Enforcement Division Monthly Report. Anybody have any questions? That'll be received and filed. Third, Economic Development and Tourism Monthly Report. Any questions? That'll be received and filed. Fourth is Development Services, CDBG Monthly Report. Any questions on that? That'll be received and filed. President's report.
Yeah, Harold had a story today. Are we looking at allowing the restaurants to have outdoor seating in the winters? Have we taken a look at that yet internally?
Those rules were extended earlier this year until the end of December 31st. So right now, on the books, is we would have those through the end of December.
You going to take a look at it again, or?
Have we gotten, has anyone reached out to us at all? No? It's something we can, if you think it's, I mean, it would just be an extension of time of those existing rules. If that's something the board would like us to do, we're happy to do that.
I think we should talk about it.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah, that's it for now.
Okay. We have nothing in other items in review at this time, so looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
One second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are adjourned.
All right.
Before you go running off, I'd like to call the Special Finance Committee to order tonight, October 11, 2021. Could I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Plauffus.
President.
Vice Chairman Noel.
President.
Trustee Gata.
President.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McClellan.
Present.
And we have a quorum. Under new business, we have just the one item. We have a couple people on the phone to talk about it, which is a request approval to amend the Chicago Bulls Development League License Agreement between Northwest Sports LLC and the Village of Hoffman Estates to modify the term dates of the, this agreement.
So moved.
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Ben, I see you and Dan both on the call. Either of you want to come off and give us a quick rundown, or?
Don't all speak at the same time.
Or not.
Maybe they fell asleep.
I'm on, this is Mark Kaplan, I'm on the call also.
Oh, hey, Mark. I didn't know, I didn't see your name, so sorry.
Ah, no problem. So this is just a pretty simple request. The Bulls are requesting the addition of one year on their 20-year team, excuse me, their 20-year term in order to get their 20 seasons in over the 21 years. So we're just extending by one year each of the terms, additional terms as detailed in the agreement. The original agreement had a force majeure clause, but it didn't have any remedies associated with it. So rather than it being sort of automatic in the agreement, we need a formal amendment to allow the additional years to be added, as outlined in the, the attachment. So again, it's, it's a pretty simple, straightforward request, and we're happy to have the Bulls here for the full 20 seasons that, since they lost last year due to COVID. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? I know we have season ticket holders on this committee, so, you know. Any comments, or? Okay, having none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
One other thing, just before we go into that.
Sure.
I'd like to wish my wife a very happy birthday, right, even though it's belated.
Yeah.
So this way, I stay out of trouble on that.
Happy birthday, Joanna.
Well, happy birthday, Joanna.[1738.51]